Good morning, everyone. This is the city council meeting of August 1st, 2016. It is 10 o'clock in the morning. Thank you for making special accommodation to be here in the morning instead of tonight. I believe this is a one-time, or an almost one-time, meeting time adjustment. So, we will start with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Nordstrom, Drew, Solomon, Doyle, Estes, Scott, Laurenti, Wright, Modrick, Roberts. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. And next, we'll have the invocation by Dale Barter of Family Heritage Alliance, and we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we do right and well to bow our heads in prayer this day. Lord, help us, our nation is in peril. Today, this place is filled from front to back with real, living, breathing patriots. In their official capacity today are men and women who love our country and the Judeo-Christian principles upon which it was founded. They serve in sacrifice as city mayor, council members, and staff. Bless each of them, as they and their families, as they seek to only but bless you. May we remember, as we leave this place, that sustaining health will only return to our city, county, state, and country when we, as individuals, take the personal responsibility of living upright lives in this very uptight world. For our leaders, Lord, political and military alike, we pray for wisdom, courage, and tenacity. Wisdom to discern the way forward, courage to translate their resolve into action, and tenacity to stay the course long after the dust has settled. For our soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines, Lord, we pray for your covering as they stand an unceasing watch to preserve our freedoms. We thank you now for each one of them, and pray, as they are placed in harm's way, that you would make secure their footing, make steady their aim, and certain their fire. Comfort and bless the parents, spouses, siblings, and children of those who serve our country so very faithfully. Father, we thank you for our first responders, our men and women in blue who serve our communities so faithfully, day in and day out. We pray for the safety of our police, sheriffs, firemen, ambulance crews, and paramedics. Lord, come this November 8th, Election Day. Grant us the wisdom to choose, as our national and state leaders, those who uphold your laws and our laws. Yes, we pray this all in the name of the One, who is the same today, yesterday, and forever, King of kings, Lord of lords, Jesus the Christ, in whose name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda, or is there a motion to adopt? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next is the public, general public comment. We don't have any speaker requests for that. We do have a few speaker requests for item 43, which we'll handle in just a few minutes. So, we'll move on to the non-public hearing items, items 1 through 45. So, we'll open public comment on 1 through 31. There are no speaker requests for those items, so we'll go straight on to the consent items, 1 through 31. If the council would like to pull any items off consent, let us know. Any other items to pull off consent? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all the items, with the exception of 26. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And we'll go to item 26, which is to acknowledge the update on summer nights, and we'll go to Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. Just ask Sandy Schwan to give us an update on how summer nights are going so far this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wright, Mayor, and the rest of the council. I appreciate your time today. I'm Sandy Schwan. I live at 6507 Dunsborough Road, and I am the President of the Board of Directors of Rapid City Summer Nights. We have been having a very good year so far. We have had some minor issues with setup, street closure, and removing of the cars. Mainly, just some confusion over 2015. We tried several different methods until we found the one that all parties could at least agree was a compromise, and there was some confusion this year about how we did that, in part probably because we had tried several methods the year prior. We did talk individually with anybody that had an issue and tried to make accommodations wherever we could possibly make accommodations. We've had very large crowds this year. I would estimate 20 to 50 percent larger than we had in 2015. They seem to be coming earlier, interestingly enough. We had, at one time, ran the event from 5:30 on, and then discussions with Main Street Square, we determined that the crowds really weren't coming until 6:30, sometimes 7 o'clock, so we rolled it back to 6 o'clock, and now we have people coming at 5:30. I'm sure they do at the square as well, so it's an interesting phenomenon how the crowd changes. We have paid our first month of sales tax last week, and Dawn can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was $9,144 that we sent to the Department of Revenue for June's sales. We, for those of you who have been there, will have noticed that we invested in some equipment. We have refrigerated beverage trailers, as opposed to the old Arctic coolers that we had to fill with ice and dump into the street and, basically, into the storm sewers every night. They were fairly expensive, but they are very convenient, they are very efficient, and they have cut our setup time by about 30 minutes and our teardown time by about 30 minutes, and we're hoping that we can even reduce that a little farther for next year so that the streets can close a little later and we can be in and out a little more seamlessly. There was also some discussion last Wednesday at the Legal and Finance Committee meeting regarding an agreement that Rapid City Summer Nights Board of Directors entered into in 2015 with the Rapid City Downtown Association. That agreement was for a percentage of our net profits to go to the Rapid City Downtown Association in exchange for some volunteers from their Board of Directors, and we were also going to exchange non-voting seats. We would have a seat on their board, and they would have a non-voting seat on our board, and that was for the purpose of hopefully creating some type of succession plan for that Downtown Association. Unfortunately, that was agreed upon in March or April. I did bring copies, if anybody would like to see them. It was agreed upon. Dave Goodwin, who is here, actually was the one who negotiated the agreement with the RCDA, and then I and their president signed the agreement, and then about a month later, in May of 2015, it was decided, for various reasons, that that particular organization, the RCDA, was no longer serving the function that was necessary, and so their actual board was disbanded and funds rolled into Destination Rapid City's budget, or so to speak. We did subsequently have a request from them for, the money was supposed to go for marketing for the RCDA, which was their primary function of their organization, was to raise funds for marketing, but as those of you on the Legal and Finance Committee saw when I forwarded our financials from 2015, we did not have a net profit at the end of the year, so when the request was made for money for the marketing campaign for Shop Downtown at Christmas, the Rapid City Summer Nights Board voted no on that request, and I think that was a responsible thing to do based on our finances at the time. I have subsequently met with Dan Seffner a couple of times, and we will put together some type of new agreement that we can both find will work, both for their organization and ours, so that we can support the marketing for downtown. We have, in the past, whenever possible, supported either events or marketing, and I believe the figure is in excess of $10,000 that we've given back to the RCDA for either, as I said, events or marketing. In Dan and I's discussion, we decided that the best use of the money would be for marketing because that goes for all of downtown, as opposed to events, which sometimes benefit certain areas more than other areas, so we'll put something together and send it for approval to the Rapid City Summer Nights Board and also to Dan's Board, and we'll get something worked out before the end of our fiscal year.
May I make a motion to acknowledge the report? Thank you. Okay, and I'll go to Darla Drew.
Sandy, I have a quick question. Just a point of clarification here. So, there's no Downtown Association anymore? They're disbanded?
There is a committee. They don't function, and Megan could correct me if I'm wrong, they no longer function as a corporation in and of themselves, as their own, with their own Board of Directors. There's a committee, and they're part of Destination Rapid City, as is Main Street Square. They're now just one entity, which I think helps with people understanding our downtown a little better, but it essentially nullifies the memorandum of understanding since it was made with that corporation.
So, the Destination Rapid City is now the board that handles the financial, I don't know, contributions or whatever you guys give to them for downtown marketing?
Correct. If, there's still, like, there's dues for downtown property owners, we, not, excuse me, that's for the bid. Downtown business owners pay dues, as they did to the RCDA, they now, the checks may payable to Destination Rapid City. Summer Nights is a member of that organization, and being, so it still functions inside of Destination Rapid City. So, Destination Rapid City sends, has a person dedicated to that particular portion or the business owners, and so they make sure there's communication that goes out, emails, to let them know. For example, when we did, had The Great Race Come to Town, that person at Destination Rapid City made sure that everyone that was a member of that downtown business owners group was notified about what was going on, but your dues are now actually paid, their dues are paid to Destination Rapid City, and then Destination Rapid City does, makes the buys for all their marketing. Their dues are basically for marketing.
Okay, so if a business owner has some kind of concern, do they go to the Destination Rapid City Board? Is that where they go, or can they attend that?
Well, for that, or if it was a concern about Summer Nights, I would hope that they would come to me because we want to put out any fires that are burning.
Okay, and yeah, just not to do with you guys in particular, but I did have some businesses that wanted to attend the Downtown Association, and I was going, I don't know where it's at right now, so that kind of clears things up for me, so I'll have them contact Dan.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sandy, I'm a huge fan, and I think you see me down there almost every, every Thursday night. The Summer Nights, is it or is it not, is it a result of a Leadership Rapid City class?
That is correct, class of 2007.
Okay, and, and part of the impetus of that project was, was for the betterment of downtown and to help year-round promotion? Would that be correct?
Correct. The impetus was, the RCDA came to our leadership class with the request to create the event. At the time, they had just received Roger Brooks's report that felt that downtown should be the heart of our city in terms of attracting tourists, and Roger Brooks's belief was, if the locals won't go, the tourists won't go. So, he created the event to create the momentum, to show the people, especially those that were opposed to the square, that if there was fun activities downtown, people would come, because of course, as you all remember, there was some belief that the park would just be, you know, a new shelter for the homeless, which in fact, it's not. A very wonderful place.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge the update on Summer Nights. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And that takes us to the end of our consent items, and now on to non-consent items, 32 through 45. We'll open public comment on those items. We have a few speaker request forms, and we'll start with Mike Kwasny. And you have three minutes, and here's your little lights.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. I appreciate your time today. As I understand it, this is just a discussion on the agenda. Tells me that our voices will not really be heard. I want you to please visit your emails in the Legal and, Legal and Council Meeting that we had last Wednesday, so you can see what's been said. I'm not going to repeat all the things that I said at those. I only have three minutes. I have a business to run, as do many, so it makes it more difficult for us to always be at these meetings. I'm a little concerned what zoning does for us, though. We do not have to keep our watch, is what should happen. Why can't we count on these rules? And if there aren't rules, maybe we need to make some. I applaud the Dove Center and their desire to bring all people to our Lord Jesus' table, as I am also a Christian. I also love the idea to involve our police force and show the respect they deserve, for they do keep us safe, and I appreciate what they do. My concern is what will they do next? Maybe they can answer that. Will it affect the neighborhood? Is it something that maybe is just outside the box and it causes a problem? We need to have something so that we don't have to keep bringing this up. This is the second time, and the next time they do it, it'll be the third time, and at some point, we would like to be done with this. Whether or not every citizen wants something in that neighborhood, and all the homeowners don't, you know, I guess it can come to a vote of the city, and we could have it that way, but it doesn't make sense. The neighbors do not want a lot of these things. The people that live in this neighborhood, they're asking for some help to just control it, and to think about, if there's something that big that's going to go on, we have areas that we can do it. I ask for you to just think as you go forward, and look and see what we can do. It would be great if the Dove Center and the neighborhood could fix this ourselves, but for some reason, it can't be done. So, I ask you to look at it, and please take the time that it needs. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. And now Shelley Halterman.
Good morning. Thank you for taking the time to let me stand before you and speak from my heart. My name is Shelley Halterman. I live in Ward 5. I live in a low-density residential neighborhood. We would like our zoning laws upheld. We don't want the zoning laws as they are to be changed. Conditional use allows for the center to be in our neighborhood. It also says that they can't even have a revival tent. They must comply with our zoning laws, as we all do. There are no special treatment for the center, nor the residents of my neighborhood. We all have to abide by the rules and the laws of zoning. Our neighborhood is not an appropriate place for an extreme-ministry, commercialized event. 2,000 people are expected to show up in our neighborhood to a commercialized event. Place yourselves in my shoes. I don't think you would want 2,000 people to show up in your neighborhood for a motocross or a rodeo or any other outside-of-the-box event. We feel that the center should take their commercialized events to more appropriate places like a fairground, a civic center, a stadium. The center has 11 acres. We have another neighbor that has 12 and a half. That neighbor obeys all of the zoning laws and doesn't have any kind of commercialized Stewen has told us that it doesn't matter how you, the council, vote today, because he's going to have his motocross with or without the council's permission. He is daring the council and the city attorney's office to stop him. Every citizen of Rapid City has a duty and a responsibility to abide by the laws that govern us. Just think, if every citizen got up tomorrow morning and decided to break the law, there would be chaos. Zoning laws are designed to keep peace and harmony, keep us all in check. Stewen has told us many times that while riding a bull, God spoke to him to carry his word to the people. It is my belief that God never once ever asked someone to break the law. Thank you for listening for, to me today.
Thank you. Dennis Halterman.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council. Dennis Halterman, resident of Parmony Heights. I'll follow up on what was said, is your primary legal obligation here today is to protect our zoning, and your decision is going to have ramifications to every residential property throughout Rapid City. What we're talking about here is the normalization of deviation. We've seen the site plan, and the site, one look at the site plan that we've all seen that was attached to the agenda. We've seen, you know, great outside-of-the-box thinking, this is all fantastic stuff, but it's the wrong place to do this in. This screams commercial event. We're loads of residential, and so this treads on our, the legal rights that we have and we had prior to the time that the center was built down there. That's the primary legal obligation that we have here. The secondary obligation is to figure what fits within that. This doesn't fit within that, and, you know, if we further look, Mr. Stewen's own, I mean, if there's a question, it's a commercial event and inappropriate, or Mr. Stewen's own admission in his letter July 20th says, 15,000 to 20,000 people, considered not-for-profit, not admission, but yet there's going to be money exchanging hands. It says, if money in the event after expense should profits arise, replenish the outreach accounts at Dove, which is fantastic, an outreach at Dove, but that in itself, by definition, makes it a commercial event, money's exchanging hands for this coming. The fact that it kind of goes in a side door doesn't change the fact. So, it's just a better location is where it needs to happen. We have any number of parks, there's ranchers that go to the church, there's all kinds of places that can be done, and be done fantastic like that. And he further goes on to say, no damage or disruption will occur in our property or surrounding areas. Well, this is exactly the definition of disruption, and it's a disruption under the theory of normalization of deviation. Mr. Kwasny noted us that. What's next? We know this is going to continue, so what we're asking you to do is protect the zoning laws in all of Rapid City here today and say, this is inappropriate. It might be the greatest idea on the planet, not in this location. So, that's what we're going to ask today, is that you stop this, because otherwise, as Mr. Kwasny noted, you all know, we're going to come back again and again and again, and it's going to continue to make the Dove Center look bad in the community. It's going to continue to cause contention between the Dove Center and the neighborhoods, and it's your time to show some leadership and move us beyond this so that they can get on a better trajectory of the locations where they want to do these things. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And now Dean McQuay.
Mayor, council members, I just have one thing to say. This isn't against the residents and the church. We have three churches on that service road, and there is only one way in and one way out, and I just want to, want you to look at this safety factors and fires. We've had fires up on M Hill, and I just want you to realize that service road is just a one-way in and a one-way out.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing on items 32 through 45, and we'll go to ordinances, item number 32, and we'll go to Legal Finance Chair, John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number LF 060116-10A, first reading, ordinance 6122, and ordinance adopting section 16.090 of the Rapid City Municipal Code requiring registration of vacant resident, residential properties, and I recommend to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, item 32. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item?
Item 33, number LF 071316-07, second reading and recommendation of ordinance number 6132, and ordinance to modify the procedure for approval of vision account projects by amending section 3.16.090B of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I recommend approval.
Okay, motion and a second for approval, and we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to support this motion. However, I'd still like to advocate for some kind of standard being established for projects that are coming in, so that we have some way to understand or realize or prioritize the projects that are coming in, so that we have some data, information, science behind the rationale why we're supporting these projects and what order they need to be. Thank you, Mayor.
Duly noted. Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 34, number LF 071316-06A, approve a one-year plan period for 2017 vision account revenue, and I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve item 34. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 35, number LF 071316-07, second reading, ordinance number 6133, and ordinance to update the contracting authority, authority delegate. thirty-three, and ordinance to update the contracting authority delegated to department directors by amending section three point zero four point zero nine zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move to approve second reading of the amended ordinance sixty-one thirty-three that was handed out in the dais.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item.
Item number thirty-six, number sixteen RG-021, first reading, ordinance sixty-one twenty-six, and ordinance amending section seventeen point oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by Gordon Howey for Black Hills Crisis Pregnancy Center for rezoning from medium-density residential district to office commercial district for property generally described as being located in the southeast corner of the intersection of Haynes Avenue and Anamosa Street, and I move to approve.
Motion and a second to approve item thirty-six. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item thirty-seven, number sixteen RG-022, first reading, ordinance sixty-one twenty-seven, and ordinance amending section seventeen point oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by KTM Design Solutions Incorporated for ZCO Incorporated for rezoning from office commercial district to light industrial district for property generally described as being located in the southeast corner of the intersection of Creek Drive and Marlin Drive, and I recommend approval.
Motion and a second to approve item thirty-seven. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item thirty-eight, number sixteen RG-023, first reading, ordinance sixty-one twenty-eight, and ordinance amending section seventeen point oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by KTM Design Solutions Incorporated for ZCO Incorporated for rezoning from general agricultural district to general commercial district for property generally described as being located south of Elkvale Road between Creek Drive and Marlin Drive, and I recommend approval.
Motion and a second to approve item thirty-eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item thirty-nine, number sixteen RG-024, first reading, ordinance sixty-one twenty-nine, and ordinance amending section seventeen point oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by KTM Design Solutions Incorporated for ZCO Incorporated for rezoning from general agricultural district to light industrial district for property generally described as being located east of the intersection of Creek Drive and Marlin Drive, and I recommend we approve.
Motion and a second for approval of item thirty-nine. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item forty, number sixteen RG-025, first reading, ordinance sixty-one thirty, and ordinance amending section seventeen point oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by KTM Design Solutions Incorporated for SSST Incorporated for rezoning from general agricultural district to general commercial district for property generally described as being located south of the intersection of Elkvale Road and East Minnesota Street, and I recommend we approve.
Motion and a second for approval of number forty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item forty-one, number sixteen RG-026, first reading, ordinance sixty-one thirty-one, and ordinance amending section seventeen point oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by KTM Design Solutions Incorporated for SSST Incorporated for rezoning from general agricultural district to office commercial district for property generally described as being located west of East Minnesota Street and south of Marlin Drive, and I recommend approval.
Motion and a second for approval of forty-one. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now for the next item is a Public Works item, we'll go to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number forty-two, PW-072616-10, approve with the requirement to sign a waiver of right to protest with a request from Richard and Carol Bell for variance to waive the requirement to install sidewalk per city ordinance, one-two-point-zero-eight-point-zero-six-zero along twelve-zero-six Clark Street, Rapid City. Recommendation, approve the request at Public Works voting four to one with Nordstrom voting no.
Okay, is there a motion on that item?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item forty-two. Everyone in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Everyone opposed, say no.
Aye.
Okay, item passes with one no. Now to item number forty-three, which is Legal Finance item, we'll go back to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item forty-three, number LF-072716-10, acknowledge discussion regarding 2016 Dove Family Fair freestyle motocross event, and I recommend we acknowledge the discussion.
Okay, I'll take Mr. Roberts' recommendation as a motion then. Okay, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge the discussion. We'll go to Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, officially. This is an item of discussion. It had been discussed in 2013 as well. The council at that time, it had indications that maybe there would be a readdress of what was under conditional use permit and if perhaps something needed to be more designated for interpretation. And so now we are here today and we have, I have seen where there's some signatures of petitions from the neighborhood as well as those that have spoke today and appreciate that they're coming to speak. And the main part of this is that we've got a beautiful church with a beautiful congregation and pastor motivated, thinking outside the box. It's really quite amazing and it's the next generation. But then on the other side of that fence, we have the neighborhood with a single in, single out that will be feeling the pressure of two thousand people coming into their quiet, low-density residential neighborhood and having that event happen right outside their back doors. And this is an event that is, would be attractive as a sports event to any of our sports complements, places that we have, our complexes that we have in the community and probably would be pretty reasonable to do so, which would be good for the city as well if there's an event was actually at a designation like that. But we need to look forward. We, we're now, we've looked in the past, 2013, we're now in the present, 2016. We need to look forward so that we don't have neighborhoods coming before us from all over the city wondering what's going to happen if something comes in with a conditional use permit that allows any act, any activity to happen in their neighborhood. So I would just like to see this discussion move forward also with a review of the conditional use permits and see if there's anything that can be done there to solve this problem so that everybody can love thy neighbor.
Okay, now we'll go to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the ward representative from Ward Five, if the neighbors are for this, I'd be for this, but the neighbors don't want this, so I don't want this. I represent the neighborhood. And I know that we will have some difficulty making this not happen, but I've been an events manager for most of my life and I've done a lot of events. And one of the, the, I don't know, arguments I heard about this event and changing the location as has been suggested was that they already spent ten thousand dollars on promotion. Well, great, you know, but we can do so much with, you know, promotion right now on Facebook, on the internet. There's so many free ways to get it out that it's gonna change locations. That's just not an excuse for me. It doesn't resonate with me. I know that you can get out the word, it's not till August twentieth. So, and it is also a safety factor for me. My mother makes several trips to the hospital a year and if those roads, if they lived in that area and those roads were blocked, she couldn't get there, you know. So not, we don't have to have a fire. We have to, you know, a person with a stroke or a heart attack, they're in danger. So I don't wanna see this area clogged up with two thousand people, you know, even if they all had vehicles and carpool, whatever, you're looking at a thousand cars probably. So I just can't, I cannot in good conscience say that this is okay for me and I would work with this group if they wanted to find a different location. I would step up and I would work with them to find a different location. We could do that. We can all win here. They can have their event and the neighborhood can be safe and I would help with that effort. Thank you.
Jerry Wright.
For clarification to the council and to the audience, constituents, would the city attorney please explain to us and them what we legally can do? Can we actually say no legally?
Go to Wade Nyberg.
Thank you.
This item is in front of you as a discussion item because there really isn't a mechanism for an approval or a disapproval by the council. The question is really whether this fits with the conditional use permit of the, that the church has. What our zoning code says is that in this low-desident, low-resident, low-density residential, sorry, I can't talk this morning, district, there's an opportunity for a church to be located with a conditional use permit. That means it's reviewed and eventually this one was approved with some stipulations on it. There were some improvements made at the time. The code does not elaborate on what a church is. There are a lot of churches that do a lot of different types of events. That's, one of the things that's been tough about this issue is a lot of churches have church fairs. Not a lot of churches have freestyle motocross component to it, but that's, that's really one of the issues here and so it's not, it's not really about approval. It's just that we've heard the complaints of the neighbors and the position of the church, so that's why it's in front of you as a discussion item.
Okay, now we'll go to John Roberts.
You done, Jerry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this one has definitely kind of got our hands tied here. I know there's been a lot of different discussion about whether we should go in and change the way that the conditional use permit's done and, you know, you're looking a lot of legal issues there because if we go in and change a conditional use permit that's in effect on people, I mean, how legally can we do that? Personally, I don't think we can legally do that. That would be up to the attorneys and the courts to decide, but going forward on conditional permits, use permits, we could definitely make some changes on what they could and couldn't do, but how do you, how do you guess every single thing that somebody may or may not wanna do? I do have a question for Chief of Police, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Chief, in 2013 during the bull riding event, was the road ever blocked, clogged, not passable?
In 2013, the church had many volunteers that worked with our staff prior to the event to help coordinate traffic control and, no, there was a, there was a constant flow of traffic and if there would have been a need for an emergency vehicle to either enter or exit, it would have been able to been accomplished very easily.
And on this event, did they have sort of the same type of a plan in effect? Do you think there's gonna be, the roads blocked like one of our council people is worried about?
They have reached out to us and we appreciate that very much when anybody in the community has a larger scale event on their property that may have an impact on the traffic flow. And so I do have a lieutenant that has been assigned to coordinate logistics with the staff at the church and the volunteers at the church. And so between now and the event, those details will be finalized and I'm confident that we will be able to support them.
Thank you, Chief. And, Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question of our fire chief, too?
Yes, you may.
Chief Two, how are you doing today?
Very good, thank you.
Now, we've also heard concerns from the neighbors about possible fires and, and I wanna know, the fire department, are you gonna have a truck on standby up there? Are you gonna have any kind of emergency response, ambulance? I don't know for sure what you're gonna have, but I wish you could explain a little bit. Do you have concerns about fire in this event?
Yeah, I'll echo what Chief Jaggers explained. The church did a good job of reaching out to us previous to the event and provided us with a site plan and what their operational plan would be for this event. And we looked at basically the two components would have been a fire response to that location and also a medical response. And the medical response to satisfy some of their insurance requirements for the company that's coming in to put on the motocross display. As part of that contract, we will have an ambulance on-site there, both for the riders themselves that are doing the demonstration as well as the visitors. So we're covered there. And then in terms of the fire response, we too also feel like they have enough volunteers on staff and that road, and that roadway would be maintained. We rely heavily on the police department to monitor that and make any adjustments to traffic flow or patterns or parking. So we feel like we've got adequate coverage to mitigate any risk in the area.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Mine'll be more of a protest vote. I'm voting no on this and I know it doesn't mean a whole lot at this point, but I voted no on this three years ago, if that's what it is. I can't believe we've had this much fun this short period of time of three years. I voted no last time around on this activity, so this is an easy one for me to vote no on as well. I know, if memory serves me, and I'd have to look it up to make sure, but the city attorney at that time made a suggestion to us to do some, some kind of an ordinance that, and since I was the only one that voted no at that time, there was no movement in that direction or even having a discussion about having a, an ordinance being drafted up. So hopefully with this protest that, where it's coming from the city council, there's a few of us, I believe, that will be protesting this. So hopefully this will be enough to bring forward whatever recommendation that we were looking at three years ago. We can at least have a discussion on that recommendation. Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield.
Okay, we'll go to Jason Salomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I ask a question to the city attorney?
Yes, you may.
Wade, does, does this open the door for other items like this, this concern that we have for other events that are held in these type of neighborhoods?
It's a little hard to answer that. I think it depends, depends on the neighborhood, on the event. Like I said, this is a low-density, low-density residential zone with a conditional use permit for a church. There are other churches that have a similar conditional use permit. There may be other, they're all done on an individual basis, so there may be other stipulations and other permits. It might have depended on the point in time when they were approved. So I think it really has to be done on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. I think this is a tough one because, you know, the church should have the right to do what they want on their property. I think we all agree with that. However, you're also supposed to love your neighbor. I think the church teaches us that and we have a whole bunch of neighbors who are upset and they also have rights as well. And I think we really need some clarification moving forward. I'm concerned that this is just one event, but this particular event sounds like could be a reoccurring event. There are other churches or organizations that might want to do things. By the way, I think it's an awesome, awesome idea. I applaud them for doing whatever it takes. It has to be whatever it takes short of not loving your neighbor. I mean, you gotta love your neighbor first and foremost and I think that's what kind of concerns me about this is if they were involved or a part of this or at peace, I'd say, you know, this would be worth the exception. And I know we're just going to acknowledge the discussion or not, but I guess I would challenge the church, you know, think about the neighbor. And I know the neighbor's beyond just your physical neighbor. I understand that, but you start with the people that are right around you and what would be the most loving thing to do for them and for the city? And I agree with Alderman Drew. I think a win-win is what we ought to look for and I would just encourage you to, to reach out to them and figure out how we can make this happen because I'm not- this happen because I'm not sure you're going to get a vote here today that's going to stop you. And the fact that you're going to do this regardless of what we say is kind of, kind of troubling, but, uh, because I do think that we have laws for a reason and we have to follow them and we, we will make exceptions when we can. And it turns out, we really can't do that today, but we can use our voice to say, work together, love your neighbor. And, uh, I guess I'll yield the floor on that. Thanks.
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. God, I gotta tell you, 2013, one of my, probably my second meeting, Dove Christian comes up with a bull riding. Are you kidding me? But anyway, I, I just, and I was so glad to get that passed us, you know, I, you know, 'cause I, I voted for it and, and in hindsight, I think we had no authority to vote on anything. I don't think we had the authority to, to vote on it, but, uh, and, and they got it past us and that damn sheep got loose. And I tell you what, I got more phone calls over that sheep. And then we had that Storm Atlas and that sheep was on, you know, but, but if, if everybody else knew where the other sheep went ahead of him, they'd have been glad that that sheep got to enjoy our city parks for a couple of months. But, you know, the, the hard part is, is, is that our zoning laws aren't broken. I mean, a church is, can legally operate under a conditional use permit as was approved in this situation in a low density residential. The problem is, is that, is that we want to narrow that down more in, in, in the subcategory of, you know, to further define what a church is and what they can and can't do. And I'm, I'm afraid that at this point in time, I don't know that we can go forward and, and take a conditional use permit that was granted in the eighties and now make it more restrictive, you know? And, and then we have kind of a slippery situation in my mind because the 13 was the bull riding, but I think, I believe in 14 and 15, they had fairs. I don't know what the headline deal was, but it, so now we're kind of getting ourselves in a situation where we, where we want to be able to approve and sort out what their headline is. And I don't, I don't, like, you know, I, these, I represent Ward Five. I just got nothing to vote on and I don't want you to, I seconded this motion just to get the discussion going. And, and I wouldn't take too much on voting yes or no because we're just acknowledging the discussion. A no vote says the discussion didn't happen. You know, we, we don't have the authority to, to approve or disprove this event as it stands right now. You know, I think the Dove Christian church could have done a better job to send out that flyer and say it's a motocross. Well, it isn't a motocross. You know, they, their marketing kind of, to me, inflamed things. If they would have went door to door and showed somebody a video of a motorcycle going from one ramp and landing on another, maybe they'd have gotten somewhere. You know, and if not, that's fine. These people have a right not to like what they don't want to like. But I, I hauled four kids for eight years to 20 motocross races a year. And a motocross race is hundreds of kids, 20 people to start line and all hell breaks loose. So, and that's not what this is. But it is an event using a motocross style motorcycle. So I think the church could have done a better job. 2,000 people ain't going to happen in my book. Central States Fair has a heck of a time during the fair getting 2,000 people to attend something. But you have every right to be concerned. So, you know, for every other situation, there's a process. Falling under the subcategory of what a church can and can't do doesn't fit into, we don't have a process for that right now. So, anyway, you know, and I'm frustrated because the last time when the, when the bull riding occurred, I sat right here, looked at their map and I said, you know, I was, I come from a background, I can read topography maps. And I said, your event won't work there. I said, you've got too much topography, too much change in your, too much slope in your sight. The bleachers aren't going to work. That isn't going to work. And I was assured that I didn't know what I was talking about. Well, guess what? A week later, cats, blades, moving dirt, no permit, you know? And I'm, so I'm extremely frustrated with Dove Christian, the way they've approached some of this stuff. It, it is a little bit sometimes an attitude that it's easier to beg for forgiveness than permission. And I don't think you should operate that way. I yield.
Okay, now we'll go back to Lisa Modric for two minutes and 40 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also want to thank President Estes as well in making some statements, um, firm but probably necessary just to let Dove know that it needs to be done in a process that really fits with everybody, including communication. I think I saw this about inside 30 days of the event and that's pretty last minute. Uh, as far as an acknowledgement and being able to vote on it, it's an item to vote on. So I feel like you can vote no for an acknowledgement because I believe what that is, is it's voting that, uh, what we have is a, a situation where we're not in favor of the discussion and that it's, we're not going in the favor of the discussion. And then if I could, Mr. Mayor, I, I'd also like to ask city attorney Wade.
Yes.
There was a statement made, Wade, that said there is an ordinance or some clause that says no revival tent. Can you address that?
That's, yeah, that's part of the, uh, in the low density residential zoning, uh, description, there's a list of the permitted uses, single family house, et cetera. And then there's a list of conditional uses. Uh, the one says a church with the exception of mission or revival tents. And so that's, um, you can't get a conditional use permit for a revival tent.
So if I could, that may be why we need to take this review back. And this 1987 use in review was basically building the church, providing the church and what the contents of the church for this location. It didn't branch off to doing events or have it become an event campus. So that's the reason why I feel it needs to go back to our city attorney's office. If we've got a revival tent on there, we probably need to also review a sports complex in review as well, or sports complex or any type of item like that as well. And, um, that's where I'd like to see this go.
Okay, that's it for all of the speaker lights up here. Um, in a minute, we're going to have a vote on acknowledging the discussion. I know the homeowners and people in the neighborhood out there are very frustrated. And, uh, this is probably more typical of government than what we all want to admit. We get to some intersection where we don't know or don't have the will to do what needs to be done next. So this, this issue, this is, this is my take on it. The conditional use was to put a church in a low density residential neighborhood. Doesn't say what type of church, doesn't say what denomination, what type of, what, how many potlucks they can have or anything like that. It's very vague. It says you can't have a revival tent and you can't have a rescue mission, but that's about it. So I don't think anyone would dispute that they have a Wednesday night youth night or a extra service on Saturday if they get full or an annual church fair in the parking lot. This is type of stuff that goes on in every church in every neighborhood. So those things are clearly in the spectrum of our, uh, the way we feel about a conditional use for a residential neighborhood. These things are okay. On the opposite end of the spectrum, we would have a full-on national championship motorcycle event where we haul in thousands of tons of dirt and bleachers and stands and have 10,000 people onsite for four days and so on. That is clearly outside our spectrum of what we think would be an acceptable use for that property. Well, so this motorcycle events being, uh, going during a time of their annual fair. So this is a fair with a bonus event and so on. So we're not sure, since it doesn't clearly fall in either, then it brings about this confusion. And I'll just say what I think, first of all, this is a good, of all the problems we could have in this city, this is a fairly good problem where we have too much stuff going on. It could be the opposite end of that, uh, matrix, but, um, so I think the, I think the recourse here for a future event of this nature, uh, one option would be for the city to file a lawsuit against the Dove Christian Center, believing, uh, with the position that we believe our conditional use would outlaw such a thing. Let that get in the court system. Let a judge decide, um, file some type of injunction to make sure they don't do that. Of course, who wants to sue a church? Nobody. I mean, there's, uh, enough reasons for us all to think we may be going to hell. I, I don't think, um, soon a church would be one of the things we'd want on our resume, but that's what the neighbor, the neighbors are saying, we need something done. We don't think this was what we signed up for. And they're looking around for someone to take action and no one's taking action. So, yeah, this is two events in three years. And the first event was disruptive and there was grading without a permit. And there were some things that were clearly outside the lines there. This one is probably, if this event would have happened first, I don't, not sure we would have had the big, uh, heartburn with it, but it didn't. So I think that's one option for this particular, uh, property in future events would be to take some legal action. And secondly, city staff can easily go back, look at the ordinances and along, uh, put a comma behind revival tent and add in other things that we want to restrict. But you know, if there's a will, I mean, it's, it, the fact of the matter is some laws really work as a chain link fence. It will keep the people who respect them from doing things that the laws say can't be done. So the law is not the magic pill, nor is enforcement of the law. So we're at a, I, I'm just trying to explain to you the confusion in my head and why it probably appears that this city administration is unwilling or unable to act on something like this because it's in the, it's gotten kind of in the too hard or too complicated box. So on behalf of the government clunkiness, I apologize for all of that in this long speech. I apologize for that too. I think that we should, uh, go back to the drawing board and look at this and we should search internally and find out what our position is and how, uh, we should get comments from the council at a later time on, on our willingness to pursue legal action on a thing of this nature. But I do agree with what's been said here today. I think this action, I think this event is going on. I don't believe anyone's going to stop that event. We will have to make sure the road is clear and, uh, take this up more on the longer term approach. I also don't think we could pass a city ordinance and have it fit retroactively to everyone who's ever operating under one set of rules. So there, that's what I've had to say. Uh, I know that doesn't make it any better, but, um, so the, do we have a motion to acknowledge this discussion?
Yeah, we do.
And a second? So all in favor of acknowledging this discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Let's take a roll call vote.
Estes.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Modric.
No.
Roberts.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
No.
Drew.
No.
Solomon.
Aye.
Motion passes four to three.
Okay, the motion passes, passes. Uh, thanks for coming in, everybody, and, uh, we'll find a way, we'll try to find a way to work together better, uh, from here on, on the, in the future. Item number 44, Mr. Roberts.
Number LF 072-716-13 authorized mayor and finance officer to sign letter of agreement with Crown Castle LA for cell tower lease amendment. And I recommend to send to the August 1st, that's today, let's see. I guess I don't know, I'll just, I recommend approval. How's that?
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of item number 44. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, item number 45, under the mayor's items is to approve the appointment of the vision committee for 2017. Uh, these committee members are Mark Massa, Tim Johnson, Bob Demersman, Megan Reader Shop, Donna Connor, Jo Lynn Littlewounded, Heather Forney, Katie Canaan, uh, and, uh, for the chairman of that committee, George Grasby. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. We'll go to Darla Drew.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to congratulate you on your diversity of this committee. I think they'll, they'll do a great job. So thank you for your selection and your time.
Thank you. So all in favor of approval of item number 45, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're on to public hearing items, items 46 through 53, uh, open and closed public comment. There are no speaker requests on those items. Uh, we'll go to consent public hearing 46 through 48. Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second for approval of 46 through 48. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll go down to number item 49, non-consent public hearing items and other ordinance or two. So we'll go back to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, item 49, number 16 RZ 019, second reading ordinance 206124 and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by city of Rapid City for rezoning from no use district to general commercial district for property generally described as being located south and east of the intersection of Fifth Street and Katron Boulevard. And I recommend approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item.
Number 16 RZ 020, second reading ordinance 6125 and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Rapid, city of Rapid City for rezoning from no use district to light industrial district for property generally described as being located south and east of the intersection of Fifth Street and Katron Boulevard. And I recommend approval.
Motion and a second for approval of item number 50. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 51, please.
Number 16 VR 003, a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers Incorporated for Roger and Heidi Hanslick for a vacation of right of way for property generally described as being located at 4018 Cali Baja Street. And I recommend to continue to the August 15th, 2016 city council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and we'll go to Jerry Wright.
Let me ask Dale a question, please.
Yes.
This is a right of way vacation. What is the issue continuing to get delayed, Dale?
I believe the issue is they have their utility service lines located in here and they're not certain of the location. So they're proceeding with caution as far as the extent of vacating because we may be creating a non-conforming situation, uh, for one or more of the property owners in the area. So we want to make sure that those property, uh, lines and the, um, relation to any service lines are known before this is finished.
Okay, we have a motion and approval for 51. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please.
Number 16 VR 007, a request by AE 2S for Black Hills Federal Credit Union for a vacation of right of way for property generally described as being located west of Second Street and north of Main Street. And I recommend we approve with stipulations.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with stipulations. Go to Jason Solomon.
Just, uh, want to note that I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval of 52. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes with one abstention. Item number 53. Since you're on a roll, Mr. Roberts, you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number 16 TI 003, Highway 16 sewer, a request by Ken Hag for Alta Terra Development to consider an application to amend project plan. consider an application to amend project plan for tax increment District Number 70, Highway 16 Sewer for property generally described as being located Katron Boulevard from Fifth Street to south US Highway 16, then south along US Highway 16 to Samus Trail and east to the proposed Highland Crossing subdivision. And I will not make a recommendation on this as of yet. To be continued again. Okay, I thought we were going to discuss it. I will make that recommendation to continue to August 15th, 2016.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move this to August 15th. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 54 is the bill list. We'll go to city finance officer Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is one addition to the bill list that's attached, and it would be to Pennington County Treasurer's Office in the amount of $42,390, and this is for the Terracotta Estates Homeowner Association property purchase. So then the total bill list would be $3,059,775.65.
Okay, motion and a second to approve. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.